Welcome to All Saints Leyton Buzzard. We're unable to host you inside our building this year, but we've put together a virtual civic service to celebrate our community life, the office of our mayor and all the volunteers and uniformed brigades that would normally be with us for this service in person. It's been a challenging year, as we're all very aware, and I hope that this service will celebrate all the good things that people have continued to do to keep our community strong and flourishing in these challenging times. So, welcome. We'll keep a moment of quiet and then we'll continue with our service. We begin our service with the first hymn, and we're delighted that Palford School and their head teacher, Mr. Heather, have given permission for us to use the recording that we made in collaboration with school for the BBC Radio 4 Sunday Worship Programme that we did in January. 'I, the Lord of Sea and Sky', picks up the theme of loving service that will run throughout our worship today. Welcome to the 2021 Civic Service. Normally, the civic service is a highlight of any mayor's year, but this year for me, my civic service is a real reflection of how the people within our community have truly come together through adversity and a celebration of those that deserve recognition for their good work. I hope you enjoy this first online service. Today is a very special service as we officially celebrate the 2021 Community Volunteer Awards and recognise three outstanding citizens for their contributions to the town. I'll be telling you a little more about this later in the service. In any other year, a lot of a mayor's time is spent working with their chosen charities and devoting time to fundraising. My mayoral year is no different, and in spite of the many challenges faced over the recent months in being able to fundraise, I'm trying my best to bring an innovative approach to my fundraising activities. I'll now be continuing to work with my three chosen charities, which are Chums Charity, Home Start Central Beds and Macmillan Leyton Linslade branch. We've so far held a number of online events, including ceramic painting for children, a Pampers Night, a Lucky Birthdays prize draw and the much-loved Rock of Ages concert at Christmas time. There are more events to come through the year, and I'm sure I can count on your support throughout the coming events. Of course, none of my work as mayor would be possible without the support and love that I have around me. Thanks to my husband, Azair, and my three children, whose help makes my work possible. Thanks also to my deputy councillor, Tony Morris, who is having to learn the ropes in a very unusual way this year. My many thanks to the mayor secretary, Julie, who works tirelessly behind the scenes and, of course, all the council staff that are instrumental in making sure that our parish continues to be one that we're all really proud of. And finally, my thanks also go to Reverend Kate and her team here at All Saints, who have worked so hard to make today's service possible, and my sincerest thanks to you all. Please do enjoy the rest of the service, and I hope that I'll be able to meet you all in person very, very soon. Today, we come to thank God for the many blessings of life, even in this challenging year, and for the privilege of public service, and to ask for strength always to strive for the greater good. We pray for all who live and work here and all those who serve our local community in their work and as volunteers. And we turn to our loving Father, the God of justice and peace, to pray for the coming of His kingdom. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be Thy name. Thy kingdom come; Thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for Thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, for ever and ever. Amen. This reading is from 1 Corinthians, chapter 13. 'If I speak in the tongues of mortals and of angels, but do not have love, I am a noisy gong or a clanging cymbal; and if I have prophetic powers and I understand all mysteries and all knowledge; and if I have all faith, so as to remove mountains, but do not have love, I am nothing; if I give away all my possessions and if I hand over my body, so that I may boast, but do not have love, I gain nothing.' Love is patient; love is kind. Love is not envious, or boastful, or arrogant, or rude. It does not insist on its own way; it is not irritable or resentful; it does not rejoice in wrongdoing, but rejoices in the truth. It bears all things, believes in all things, hopes all things, endures all things. Love never fades; but as for prophecies, they will come to an end; as for tongues, they will cease; as for knowledge, it will come to an end; for we know only in part, and we prophesy only in part; but when the complete comes, the partial will come to an end. When I was a child, I spoke like a child; I thought like a child; I reasoned like a child. When I became an adult, I put an end to childish ways; for now we see in a mirror dimly, but then we will see face to face. Now I know only in part; then I will know fully, even as I have been fully known. And now faith, hope, and love abide, these three; and the greatest of these three is love.' Thanks be to God.
O be joyful in the Lord our Lord and King! Serve the Lord with gladness and come before His presence with a song! Be sure that the Lord is God; if it's He that has saved us and taught we ourselves. We are His people; we are His people; and the sheep of His pasture. Oh, go your way to His gate! Oh, go your way to His gate! With thanks given and deemed to His cause with praise! Be thankful, be thankful unto Him! Be thankful, be thankful unto Him! And speak good, and speak good of His name! For the Lord is gracious, is merciful; he is everlasting, and his truth endureeth Glory be to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Ghost, as it was in the beginning, is now and ever shall be, wondrous with intent, with intent. Amen.
This is a reading from Matthew, chapter 25, verses 31 to 45, 'The Judgment of the Nations'. 'When the Son of Man comes in His glory, and all the angels with him, then he will sit on the throne of his glory; all the nations will be gathered before him; and he will separate people one from another, as a shepherd separates the sheep from the goats; and he will put the sheep at his right hand and the goats at his left. Then the king will say to those at his right hand, "Come, you that are blessed by my Father; inherit the kingdom prepared for you from the foundation of the world; for I was hungry, and you gave me food; I was thirsty, and you gave me something to drink; I was a stranger, and you welcomed me; I was naked, and you gave me clothing; I was sick, and you took care of me; I was in prison, and you visited me.'" Then the righteous will answer him, "Lord, when was it that we saw you hungry and gave you food? Or thirsty and gave you something to drink? And when was it that we saw you a stranger and welcomed you? Or naked and gave you clothing? And when was it that we saw you sick or in prison, or visited you?" And the king will answer them, "Truly I tell you: just as you did it to one of the least of these who are members of my family, you did it to me." Then he will say to those at his left hand, "You that are accursed, depart from me into the eternal fire prepared for the devil and his angels; for I was hungry, and you gave me no food; I was thirsty, and you gave me nothing to drink; I was a stranger, and you did not welcome me; naked, and you did not give me clothing; sick and in prison, and you did not visit me." Then they also will answer, "Lord, when was it that we saw you hungry or thirsty, or a stranger, or naked, or sick, or in prison, and did not take care of you?" Then he will answer them, "Truly I tell you: just as you did not do it to one of the least of these, you did not do it to me." May I speak in the name of God, Father, Son and Holy Spirit? Today, we're giving thanks for our civic life. This year, there are so many things that we took for granted that have come to have new meaning for us. And surely, the various forms of institutions, communities and volunteers that we give thanks for today have come to have a new significance for us, because it's been a year when we've had to rely on each other and on the kindness of strangers. We've been trying to look after each other at a time when we were all feeling, at best, unsettled and, at worst, broken-hearted or even just broken. But one of the things that has continued to give me hope through the last year is the way that people have responded to the many needs that the pandemic has thrown up. It's so easy to focus on the difficulties, but it has been just amazing to see how so many people in so many different ways have stepped forward to help. We find ourselves in the season of the church year called Lent. It is a time to follow the example of Jesus as He goes into the wilderness and faces temptations and hardship, and then as He walks the way of the cross to suffer and to die for us. So what we see in the life of Jesus is that God doesn't stay apart from the struggles and the pains of our lives, but comes to be with us, not just to know our suffering, but to take us through that and into new life and new possibilities. Our gospel reading makes it clear that we are called to follow this example and also to care for each other. Jesus says, "Whatever you did to the least of these, you did to me." So if we seek to follow the example of Christ, we must care for the most vulnerable among us, because He who was all-powerful chose to become the most vulnerable of all. And if Jesus chose to reach out and value the marginalised and excluded, crossing social and religious boundaries to do so, then we must follow His example and reach out in love to everyone. So we are called to loving service, and we know that this can be costly. When St Paul wrote that letter to the early Christians in Corinth, he wanted to make it clear that whatever they did, loving as God loved us should be their motivation. They too should follow in that example of caring for the poor. And they also needed to learn to live with each other, which, as we know, can be challenging, even with the people that we love the most. So when we talk about love and service, we're not talking about things on the edges of our lives, a bolt-on that we can engage with or not. These are the things that should be forming our character and the actions by which we will be judged. But it's really important that we also don't lose heart. It's easy to think that we all have to be the kind of community heroes that we're celebrating today, those who give tirelessly of themselves to the benefit of others. But we don't worry, shouldn't worry, about what others are doing or can offer. It's not a game of comparisons. And sometimes, the most important things can be really small and really simple. We can all think of acts of kindness that have made a difference to us. Some of them will be little things that help us out and lift our spirits. It may be a smile in someone's eyes as we pass them on the street; the friend that gets your shopping for you when you can't go out; the phone call just to see that you're doing okay to ask how you are. We should never dismiss such small acts of kindness, because these form the fabric of our society and every single one of us can make that choice to be kind. So today, we give thanks for all those who offer their lives in public service and responsibility in our borough. And we give thanks too for those who volunteer when they don't have to, who keep our uniformed groups going, who reach out in community service. We thank everyone who has helped us when we needed it the most. And I pray that in this worship today, we will be encouraged to keep going with our lives of loving service, because it strengthens us as a community who belong together and care for each other. And as St Paul says, now these three remain: faith, hope and love; but the greatest of these is love. Amen.
Let judges sound and shout; no dog can feed the lamb. Let all the world see; my God and Thee! My God and Thee! Let all the world see; my God and Thee!
Let us pray. Lord, we pray for this town of Leyton Linslade and for all who live here, for the work of the mayor and the councillors and for all who bear responsibility in the ordering of our common life; for those who work with and for our children and young people in education and recreation; for a vision of community which inspires our labours and for the use of our gifts in the service of God's people. Lord, hear our prayer. We pray for the nations of the world, their peace, stability and concord; for Elizabeth our Queen; for our elected representatives in national and local government; for all who work for the maintenance of civil order and the upholding of the law in this town and nation; for wisdom and discernment in their several vocations. Lord, hear our prayer. For all in need and those who care for them; for refugees and those without shelter or work; for the sick, lonely and the despairing; the aged and the distressed; for all who suffer through violence, warfare, crime, exploitation or neglect. Lord, hear our prayer. For all deceased former members of the town council; for our past civic benefactors and all who have died, that they may rest in peace. Lord, hear our prayer. Lord, as we offer these prayers, we pray that we would know your love in our hearts and in our homes. And we offer these and all our prayers through the name and for the sake of our Saviour, Jesus Christ. Amen. I'm very proud to announce that during my mayoral year, we've had the inauguration of the Community Volunteer Awards, which will now continue as an annual event. Normally, these awards would be awarded at this service, but unfortunately, we are holding off the official presentation until we're able to do so safely. Now, our first-ever three awards have gone to three very deserving individuals, who are Katrina Boyce, Rosemary Gunter and Stuart Clark. All three have been nominated by local residents and have all given at least five years of local voluntary services, which have really benefited our local town. Katrina set up the Centre for Health, Healing and Counselling over 30 years ago, and she offers help, support, activities and therapies to a really wide range of people in the community, and I know for sure that many have benefited from her work. Rosemary has always worked tirelessly in the local community and is particularly interested in healthcare, which shows in her many roles that she's involved in, including the Bassett Road Patient Participation Group and also a walking for health initiative that she's helped to set up. So Rosemary's work, again, really worthwhile in keeping in touch with her.
in keeping in touch with people's health and looking after them. And finally, we have Stuart Clark, who was a former ambulance service member and has delivered numerous first aid courses, including to local schools and groups, and has helped many, many people to have better knowledge of first aid courses in general. All three of these people have worked so selflessly in our community and we are really, really fortunate to have them within our community. And these are people that don't look for any glory or recognition, but just work truly from the heart. And for that, we are very, very thankful. And today, I'd like to, as mayor and as representative of the town, give my formal thanks to these three individuals for everything that they do for us. And thank you.
And so I invite you now to join with me in an act of dedication as we commit ourselves to lives of loving service. God, our Redeemer and our King, we thankfully acknowledge that to you and your grace, we owe all that we are and all that we have. You call us to live in community and to serve one another in compassion and love. Forgive us for when we have fallen short of that ideal. We now offer to you for whatever of life remains to us, while time is ours, while health is ours, while opportunity is ours, all that we are and all that we have. Take us and use us as you will in the service of others and for the furtherance of your kingdom, that in all things your name may be glorified through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Our final blessing. God, grant to the living grace, to the departed rest, to the church, the Queen, the Commonwealth, and all humankind, peace and concord; and to us and all his servants, life everlasting. The blessing of God Almighty, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit be with you and all those whom you love, this day and always. Amen.